Go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everyone. As councillor Exner mentioned, we do have lighter items on the agenda, but very important ones. I always start with the review of the agenda. I will call for any proposed changes to the agenda. We'll then get into public comment. There's been nobody that has signed up for public comment or for online or in person, but remember if you're here and wish to do public testimony for the public hearing for the development that we are going to be having, there will be opportunity for you to participate at that time. Will there be any comments for public testimony from last meeting? I don't think there is. Okay. We'll then be going to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our November seventh meeting as well as our Sandy Transit Operations Contract. And we'll go to ordinances where we do have that public hearing on the Bull Run Terrace reconsideration. There will be an opportunity for public testimony at that time. And we'll then wrap up our meeting this evening with the report from Jordan Wheeler, our city manager, and then our committee and council reports. With that, I should ask if there's a roll call. Let's go and do that.
Yes, councillor Pete's old here. Councillor Smallwood.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon's here. Councillor Walker.
Here.
Councillor Exner.
Here.
Councillor Hockenson.
Here.
Mayor Polian.
Here. Thank you. With that, I will call for any proposed changes for tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we will move forward on the agenda. There's no one that submitted for public comments, so we'll move to the consent agenda that has our city council meeting minutes from our November seventh meeting as well as the Sandy Transit Operations Contract. I'll open for discussion. If there is none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
There's a motion by councillor Exner, a second by councillor Pete's old to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Opposed, nays or thumbs down. Motion carries. All right, moving forward into ordinances. I will call, I will open this public hearing for state land use file number twenty-two dash zero three eight at seven oh five. I will now call for any abstentions from the hearing body. I will now call for any conflicts of interest from the hearing body.
Yes. I have no personal or financial conflict of interest with this Bull Run Terrace proposal. But prior to becoming a city councillor, I did provide testimony about the original proposed development in November twenty twenty. My comments were mostly about the number of allowable units and the math for that and the parkland dedication. As a city councillor, I understand my responsibilities to review this and all land use decisions impartially and without bias. I would do that. In this case, a Bull Run Terrace currently before us for consideration.
I do have a question, councillor, for clarification on that. I mean, I understand that there was some testimony prior, but there was also some activism, wasn't there? I mean, there were some posts under some community pages. I've seen a comment over the last couple of weeks on a community page that they were hired for drone footage for a proposed park. It does feel like a certain level of activism on this. Are we sure that we can enter this with an unbiased mind?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Any other declarations?
I as well testified in the original one.
And me.
All right. I will now pull the hearing body for any.
And we can stay impartial.
I will now pull the body for ex parte contact, including any site visits.
I run by the site every day.
I walk to the site regularly. Then during this particular I but have in the past.
Member of the community, I've seen the proper. All right, I will now call for any challenges to members of the hearing body. To bring a challenge, if you're joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved according to the applicable criteria or should include the proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by the close of record, or failed to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitution or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with the most detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. I'll now call Kelly to give a staff report.
Thank you, mayor. Give me one second here. Okay, there we go. Okay, so tonight we're hearing the Bull Run Terrace reconsideration as the mayor just said. This is just a picture, actually a street view picture of the site looking south from the intersection with this Loop Drive. So this is where the extension of Debarco Road would come out approximately to the highway. This is the site identified in the red outline. It is south of Highway twenty-six and Vista Loop Drive. It is east of Fawn Street and Debarco Road. And it's currently largely vegetated with some pretty big groves of trees, one of which, one of the large groves of trees kind of in the north west corner of the site by the highway would remain largely intact. Most of the other trees would be removed to make way for Debarco Road, the other streets, and of course, development. This is just kind of going into the background and the history of this application. There's some background even beyond this that I didn't feel to share in the slideshow tonight. But there has been submitted in the past, speaking to applications that were called Vista Loop South back in the mid two thousands that were reinstated, I think around two thousand eleven or twelve. But fast forwarding to more recent history, as many of you will remember, there was Bull Run Terrace subdivision file number nineteen fifty that was denied. It was then appealed by the same applicant that is presenting their case tonight to Luba. And then it was put on hold, which means just basically on it or on stay, which just means on hold is what that means. The applicant then applied with a second land use application with a subdivision, this time without any zone changes and made a pretty strong, clear and objective argument case. This was again denied at the local level, again was appealed to Luba and again was put on hold. Then more recently, fast forward to this last summer, probably, I want to say it was either in July or August. In accordance with the ORS that's cited on the screen here, they asked the city council to reconsider the Bull Run Terrace subdivision. I believe it was in September. At a executive session, the city council decided to reconsider the original Bull Run Terrace subdivision application from nineteen, from file number nineteen fifty. This was done in executive session, just so the public knows, because it was pending litigation. And that's the reason that the city council could consider, you know, consider if the hearing tonight would occur or not. So the council agreed to reconsider the proposal with modifications. And I'll walk through the modifications, but the main one was to have actually a dwelling unit cap, which previously there was a lot of unknowns around how many dwelling units would be located at the site. So the review type is a type four comprehensive plan amendment, a zone change, a subdivision and a specific area plan overlay, and it also has significant tree removal. It's quasi judicial de novo, which means we're starting anew, starting from the beginning. That's what allowed for new testimony to be submitted and new stuff to be put into the record. Before you also tonight is ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-seven. That would also have to be adopted as part of the process. So there would be a subdivision approval and also an ordinance approval, kind of two separate motions that would need to occur. And I'll walk through that more at the end of my slideshow. And I believe Mayor Polian has a good understanding of how that works. It is rather complicated and unique.
I would seriously question whether Mayor Polian understands.
I will help Mayor Polian. And then the time limits, I think, as was already presented, twenty minutes for the applicant, ten minutes for the rebuttal and three minutes per each public member for testimony. So one important thing that I think is sort of difficult to understand, but I tried to summarize it as best I could in the findings within the staff report and also on the slide is that because this is a reconsideration of a land use file from two thousand nineteen, we have to use the code that was in effect at that time. So the more recent code changes that happened to chapter seventeen eighty-six and seventeen one hundred, which are the parkland and land division sections, those are not applicable to this consideration tonight. So we are using and relying on the old code from two thousand nineteen, and that's what I had to review to do the assessment for the staff report. It is important to also note, however, that House Bill two thousand one and Senate Bill four five eight do apply because that was state legislation that independent of any local municipal code that applies to this site and other sites within city limits at this time. Another important note that I thought was worth mentioning is that this application is not subject to the moratorium that went into effect with resolution two thousand twenty-two twenty-four that was approved by council on October third. And the reason why is because it was submitted prior to the moratorium going into effect. And, you know, as I just explained on the previous slide, this, this is actually a two thousand nineteen application. So it was actually long before the moratorium was established. I did want to explain though that even if it is approved for land use approval, there's still other basically hurdles or things to get by and that's getting DQ approval and also getting building permits. And they could be limited potentially by the ERU cap at the time that they go to get those building permits. So even though the moratorium is not effective on this land use application approval process or denial process, it is still applicable in the sense that there's a potential they could be limited when they go to pull building permits. Just like anybody else right now with an ERU allowance. So, and I can explain that more if anybody has any questions on that. The request, and just to break it down.
They're not in the cap, but they are in the cap. They're in the negotiating.
So everybody with vested rights in the city of Sandy, so everybody with an approved land use application has the ability, you know, if their plat is complete and recorded, they have the ability to pull building permits.
Right.
So long as they don't exceed the ERU cap that we've defined in the resolution.
Right.
So right now the cap is a hundred and twenty.
So there was, yeah, so they're outside the moratorium, but they're within the cap.
Correct.
Yeah. Sorry, it's just, yeah, okay. I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, there's two like competing interests there kind of. Yeah. So it's a seven lot subdivision. It's fifteen point nine one gross acres. After you take out the right of way, the parkland, the stormwater tracks, that gives you a net acreage left of eleven point six. And that's what we base our density allowances on is net acres. So it's, that's important to note. There's four lots totaling point five nine acres that are zoned R one. That would likely, according to the, according to the applicant, have eight duplex units, so four duplexes, which consist of eight units. There's one lot to the south of Debarco that is one point two three acres. That's proposed as R two with a cap of seventeen multifamily dwelling units. There's one lot to the east of that, to the east of Debarco Road and south of Highway twenty-six. That's proposed with the R three zoning designation with a cap of a hundred and twenty-seven multifamily dwelling units. And then there's one lot that's three point two eight acres of C three, so Village Commercial, that will have to have a commercial business is what the code says. It doesn't specify how many commercial businesses with a cap of forty-eight multifamily dwelling units. And as you'll remember, from the original Bull Run Terrace application, there was no caps. So it was very kind of difficult to determine what the upper limit of units could be. With the proposed cap tonight, it is setting it at these number of dwelling units per each lot. And then this is just, I'm not going to read all these, but this is just the chain, the zone map change request defining what the acreage would go to for the four zoning districts. Currently, the property has three zoning districts, R one, R two and C three. And the applicant is proposing R one, R two, R three and C three. So even currently, the applicant can put in duplexes and they can put in multifamily. But this is kind of changing that makeup of what they can put in. And here is the proposed zoning map change. It is attachment B to the ordinance. And as you'll see on the left-hand side is the existing zoning with the four different zoning designations. On the right, you'll see the, or I'm sorry, with the three existing zoning designations. On the right, you'll see the proposal with five zoning designations, the four of which I just spoke about on the previous slide, plus one point seven five five acres for parkland. And that's what's colored in green there. And that is a budding Deer Point Park. So the density is a difficult thing to determine. I'll just be very honest and open about that. The applicants proposing two hundred dwelling units. If you look through my analysis, which I think was about three and a half pages long, it's on pages six through some portion of page nine in the staff report, is that the ultimate build out is somewhere around the same amount. I'll just say that. Now, it could be higher depending on how many duplexes you could squeeze in. There's a potential it could be a few less, but it's right around two hundred dwelling units. So you know, as it explains in the staff report, I believe it potentially could be up to two hundred and twenty-six dwelling units. But there's no guarantees. It's all, there's also no guarantees that there'll actually be two hundred dwelling units built. So that's just a cap. There's nothing saying they couldn't have less. They just can't have less than the, the minimum density, but we never see that anyways. I don't think that's much of a concern. The parkland dedication, as I spoke about on a few slides ago, that's one point seven seven or one point seven five five acres. It is contiguous to the existing Deer Point Park, which is undeveloped. It would be rezoned to POS. It also necessitates a comprehensive plan map amendment, and that's because when POS was adopted into the development code in two thousand eleven, the comp plan wasn't updated so that village can have parkland or POS as a designation. So that will be something we're going to be addressing with the new comp plan that we're going to be adopting. But at this point, you just have to do a complment that. It is point three three acres larger than the original proposal from two thousand nineteen. And here's just the comp plan map. This is attachment A to the ordinance. On the left-hand side, again, it's showing it all as village. On the right-hand side, it's showing it mainly as village with only a small portion being changed to parks and open space. Here's the R one lots all in yellow. As I said, it would be eight dwelling units. It's four lots. Each lot is at least seventy-five hundred square feet per the code. And then you do have an interesting thing where we have two tracks, B and C, which are stormwater facilities. But they do have to be zoned something, so it would just made sense to apply the same zoning designation. It would be dedicated to the city though, so there's no development potential on tracks B or C. Here's the R two land. According to the density analysis I completed, it could have up to seventeen dwelling units on it based on the size. The proposed cap that the applicant is proposing is also seventeen, so it's the maximum density. Again, this is not, this is just to subdivide the land, this approval process. So any future design of the apartments on that site would be done in a separate process. And that goes for the, all the other properties as well. We're not approving any of the the site design like the parking, stormwater landscaping. We're not approving the building designs tonight. Here's the R three, same thing, based on the size, the maximum density is a hundred and thirty dwelling units. They're proposing a cap of a hundred and twenty-seven, so just slightly less. And again, future design view with a future application. Here's the C three, same kind of thing as far as the other two, except there's an unknown amount of density on this lot, and that's because in the current development code, again, something I want to change with the comp plan if we decide to still have Village Commercial. With the current development code, it doesn't specify the density range. So the, the maximum density is somewhat unknown. All I do know is you have to put at least one commercial business in. With the proposal, what, what I like about it is it is giving some certainty to the maximum number of dwelling units. And that would be forty-eight in this case.
Current development code or the twenty nineteen?
About, great point. So the twenty nineteen and the current, but yes, great point. Yeah. Yeah, that the village commercial part of the development code hasn't been modified in that time period. This is another very interesting thing that I think we're going to be visiting in the comprehensive plan. I can't really make fully heads or tails out of why this was written this way in nineteen ninety-seven. But basically what the comp plan says is, and I'll just read it, that development within village areas is governed by a specific area plan approved by the city as a type four land use decision. So, you know, I had our attorney, David Doofman, when he was still the main city attorney, take a look at that. And the conclusion we came to is that any development within a village area is supposed to go through a specific area plan review. It goes on to say shifting of the underlying zoning district boundaries to accommodate development constraints and land divisions for specific development proposals may be allowed through approval of a specific area plan. So it's kind of hitting both of these points. It's development within a village designation. So we would need a specific area plan anyways, but then they're also proposing shifting of the underlying zone. So it really hammers that it needs an SAP. The only other specific area plan currently in Sandy is the Bornsted Village Overlay. And I think that was a planning effort done by the city. My best guess is that when they adopted this into the comp plan in ninety-seven, the intention most likely was to go to every village designated area in the city and come up with plans similar to the Bornsted Village Overlay Plan. And then for whatever reason, I'm not pushing blame at all, but for whatever reason that didn't occur. And so we have some villages in the city limits, I believe, that don't have specific area plans. That's the best thing I can come up with, how this kind of all unfolded. Typically, well, I won't say typically, I'll say per the Bornsted Village Overlay, the only SAP in the city limits. The main difference is it has additional tree retention, green streets and additional design standards for single family homes. And so that's what I'm proposing with the staff report you see tonight is to kind of incorporate all the same ideas and specifications that are in the Bornsted Village Overlay Plan into what you're looking at and reviewing tonight. So here are some additional things that I, I would be proposing, and the applicant was proposing a few of these anyways. Is additional trees retained above and beyond chapter seventeen one oh two. This would be consistent with the, the BDO. This one even has additional tree retention requirements above the original Bull Run Terrace iteration in two thousand nineteen. Additional plantings along the common property line with Deer Point subdivision, that's exhibit I in the packet. That was something the applicant proposed in two thousand twenty after hearing from the neighbors to the west. The requirement to install green streets whales.
On the tree retention thing, the confusion I had was I thought that under the acreage, it showed zero acres for tree retention called out. Is that maybe included in another number or?
I think there's eighty-one trees they're proposing to retain. I, I believe sixty-two of them meet our minimum dimension and health standards. So there.
Yeah, looking at the prior acres, they had it called out as, I don't know, I forget how many acres, you know, for tree retention. And then in the new proposal, it just said zero. So I was, but then I did see that on one of the plat maps, it showed some trees on the plat. I couldn't tell. So, yeah, that was kind of the confusion, I think.
Yeah, maybe the applicant can speak to that too. I do know they're proposing sixty-two that meet the standard. The thing I added is there are another nineteen that are either in good or fair shape or health that aren't eleven inches, but I think could and should be retained. And so that's why I'm saying there, there are some additional trees, about nineteen of them, more than we would have had retained in the two thousand nineteen proposal. So we're just trying to retain some extra vegetation. The other thing though, you know, I recommended adding through this proposal was for the four lots that are R one that have duplexes is to add some additional garage design standards similar to the BDO, so we don't have snout houses. It's not a big change. It's not a big addition, but it is something more common within the BDO. I'm not going to go through all these. I think they can be incredibly boring and I think very onerous to go through all of them. So what I'm going to basically say is, if you look at the staff report, there's two, there's two approval criteria for comp plans in our code. There's four for zoning map amendments. There's A through H, what's the math on that, for specific area plans. And then there's six in two thousand nineteen, at least. There would be more now, but in two thousand nineteen, there were six for subdivisions. I went through them pretty thoroughly and I do believe they're meeting all those criterion with this with this proposal that's before you tonight. And if we want to dive into any of those, we can pull up the staff report and look at them. But they are all listed in the staff report. I didn't really want to go through the entire list here. And then I want to dive into a few big potential public, public benefits. And I think this is kind of the meat of the decision before you tonight, in my opinion at least. In addition to the meeting the criteria. So I think one of the main things that this proposal is proposing is extending Debarco Road to intersect with Highway twenty-six. This is important for a few reasons. It it's consistent with the two thousand eleven TSP. It's actually one of the priority projects in the two thousand eleven TSP, and it's on our capital improvement list. So it's a pretty vital connection within the community. It's a pretty needed connection for people that commute, for people to go into the neighborhood there just for general, you know, shopping or recreation purposes. It's also important for first responders. And it also gives another connection and a better intersection than what Lang and Sand currently performs as. Lang and Sand's at a skewed angle, if you're familiar with it. It's not a ninety degree into the highway. Lang and Sand has much shorter site distance ability than this intersection would, so it's on a curve. At some point in the future, this intersection would be signalized. This subdivision alone wouldn't warrant that, but at some point in the future it would be signalized. However, I do say even, even without the signal, it's a much safer intersection than Lang and Sand currently allows for citizens in the community. Another big public benefit, and this is different from the previous iteration in two thousand nineteen that was denied, is our transportation engineers, DCS associates now, they're different than our previous transportation engineer. They came up with a methodology that's within the packet to get a proportional share fee for the impacts this development will cause on the intersection of Debarco Road and Highway two eleven, which is a very important intersection to get improved and will be one of the priority projects in the new TSP. And will be, you know, will be allocating money for that project to improve that intersection. And our current traffic engineer thought that the, based on the impacts that this development makes to that intersection, they should be paying proportional share fee. And this is a very common practice in other jurisdictions throughout state of Oregon. I don't think Sandy has used this much in the past that I know of at least. However, going forward, I think this is going to be another funding mechanism we're going to be targeting, especially with our new transportation engineer. Another main public benefit, I think one of the biggest definitely is for me with my kids, is expanding Deer Point Park by one point seven five five acres. This is consistent with the ninety-seven Parks Master Plan. It's consistent, which is the applicable Parks Master Plan for this application tonight. It is applicable and consistent with the new Parks Master Plan that was also recently adopted. The Parks and Trails Advisory Board supported it. It is slightly larger than the two thousand nineteen proposal. Staff is recommending dedication of the park prior to plat recording through a separate deed process, which would happen within a hundred and eighty days. I sent a memo out on Thursday specifying that a little more clearly. And so that guarantees that. And so that guarantees that the parkland would be dedicated prior to the plat or potentially if the plat never goes forward. You know, one that one thing I want to recognize here, and I think the applicant submitted some additional materials in this regard just tonight. It was from their attorney. If this is approved by the council, the ordinance, then within thirty days of the second reading, the parkland that one point seven five five acres will be rezoned to POS. And so there's really no reason for the developer to hold on to that property after those thirty days as it's going to be parkland. It's not going to have development potential, and the only ability to change that zoning classification would be come back through city council. So I I don't really see a big issue with proceeding in that fashion. And then I think another another thing that we're recommending entertaining through a development agreement, which I I think the applicant is open to, or at least they were in the past, is to partner with the city to help develop the park property. I know the Parks and Rec Department in talking to our Parks and Rec Director is going to be very active and very very busy with the the community campus project and also with some new trails. I believe around that same area. So it'd be a great partnership with this developer to be able to potentially develop this park sun at least at the same time while they're quickly developing another parking town. Other public benefits, I'm not going to really belabor these. They are smaller, I will say. But it's basically installing another street consistent with the two thousand eleven TSP. Extending Fawn Street, which is a dead end currently. It's fulfilling housing needs as defined in the two thousand fifteen urbanization study that was acknowledged by the state. And it's providing for a mixture of housing types consistent with the twenty forty plan. So the recommendation, and the and this is the the part that Mayor Polium and I were kind of chuckling about. If you do decide to approve the ordinance, what we would recommend is adopting or approving the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty two twenty seven this evening. Depending on the voting on that, we would probably come back at a second meeting to do the second reading of that ordinance and then also to make a motion to approve the subdivision. I would recommend tonight to close the public hearing if we can. Just so we don't get any additional testimony between tonight and potentially the next reading. And with that, that is my presentation.
Thank you.
I noticed in the reading of the development project that there's a considerable amount of work in some additional stormwater taken care of, and it looks like there's a number of projects that were included in this thing. Would you come and give me some of the background of how that happened? The stormwater portion. Saw the pond, I saw some stuff that where Debarco comes up with twenty six. And you have the storm swells.
Yeah.
A lot of work that was done to make sure that the stormwater portion of this was done a high degree, a little higher than I'd seen before.
Yeah, stormwater is definitely not my specialty. I'll just be very upfront about that. They are proposing. Yeah, they are proposing two facilities, tracks B and C. This, I think, based on the size of those, they could accommodate the stormwater from the site improvements. If not, they would have to create another stormwater tract or probably not, in this case, probably just another stormwater facility. The green streets are just an alternative, so that they don't treat as much at one site, instead you kind of disperse that treatment. So I think, you know, if if they install green streets throughout subdivision, there might be an opportunity to leave the storm ponds at the same size in a case of larger storm events. Or there might even be a a chance to decrease the size of those storm swells and save the developer a little bit of money there. Although they would be paying for green streets, so that increases the the cost burdens on that portion.
Sure.
Can you describe what a green street is? Because I know we did green parking lots and sidewalks that fail. What's a green street?
A green street is basically just a grassy swale that's wider than your typical planter strip that can hold and. So what exactly?
You're not talking, what are you talking specialized pavement?
Are you talking about permeable paving?
Yeah, we did down at the public works or the sidewalk there on hood by the Cedar Ridge that just crumble and fall apart.
Yeah, we're not, we're.
That affected you for life.
Yeah, it wouldn't. We we, yeah, we're certainly not proposing that with any of the conditions. If the applicant did with a future land use supplemental, they could propose that. I tend to agree with you. They are not as good as I don't think people are selling them to be twenty years ago. They they had to be vacuumed a lot, too, like the one in Money Park just got recently vacuumed.
Rice Krispie cookie.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, um, two questions before applicant. Yeah.
Yeah, more questions for staff?
Staff, yep.
Okay, I never can.
Well, it's literally you can do it now, or you can wait till after the applicant and and testimony, and then we can go back to staff.
There were three memos that came out today. Got added to the the package, and I'd like you to walk me through one of them because the ARD engineering.
It's exhibit X.
Thank you. Exhibit X, which comes before Y. What what is this? What is this responding to and why? And what is the road that's actually? What is the intersection actually proposed? Because there's a lot of talk in there about a four way stop on twenty six, which I'm sure would make just every skier thrilled.
Four way stop.
That's what, well, I just, what does it mean? That's what I'm asking.
I I would have to rely on them to answer this memo.
Why did they send it? Let's start with that.
I I think it's, I I think at the end of it, um, well, I don't know if they talk about it in here or not. I know in their attorney's email that is also part of the record. I think part of it's just to reserve that argument.
That was, well, so who is DKS? Is this?
Art, so Art Engineer is Mike Ard right there. He's he's the applicant's engineer, traffic engineer. DKS associates is the city's transportation engineer.
Okay, so.
And they're they're not here tonight.
So who's? So DKS is objecting or challenging findings from the applicant? Or are they confirming?
Yeah, so DK, so what happened is, you know, Mr. Ard, and he can go into it more if you would like him once they're testifying, but he basically submitted what's called a traffic impact analysis. The our traffic engineer reviewed that and had some slight disagreements with the analysis, and that's what Mr. Ard's responding to in this letter.
So at some point in time, I'd like to understand the four way stop on twenty six and how that's going to work.
Yeah, so so I think, I mean, literally in the twenty minute presentation, or we'll also have an opportunity for follow up questions afterwards if they fail to do so.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
All right, with that, let's go ahead and move forward for applicant's presentation. Uh, you have up to twenty minutes, and Jeff Operati will provide you with a two minute warning. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Please bear with me. I am like so many of us recovering from whatever mini colds are going around right now. My name's Garrett Stevenson. I'm a land use attorney for the applicant. And with me tonight, behind me is Tracy Brown, who I'm sure most of you are familiar with, and Dave Vanderhayde, who is the owner of Roll Tide Properties Corp., as well as Mike Ard, who we're probably going to bring up to address some of Counselor Hokinson's questions. But I just wanted to give a quick introduction here and start by expressing my sincere thanks for being willing to reconsider this application. What you have in front of you is the culmination of something like three years of hard work, and if you add the time it takes to actually put together a plan before it even gets submitted to Kelly, you you can consider that four years easily. And it's not always been easy. All of us in this room have seen this plan in one guise or another. And you, some of you who were on the council in two thousand twenty might recall that we almost got this one done. We got it through first reading, but didn't get it through the second. And all of you were present in the proceedings to consider an alternative plan, which was a straight subdivision plan called Deer Meadows. We've actually, despite what the reputation of developers is, we actually did listen really hard to everything that this council had to say, and I think Kelly can attest that we've had a very open line of communication. We're trying to do something that works from a business standpoint, but also fulfills the city's needs as you've expressed those. And I think the revised proposal addresses all of the council's concerns that we've heard thus far. That's exactly what we framed it to do. And in creating the revised proposal, we actually spent a lot of time to consider the feedback that this council gave us at the Deer Meadows hearing back in April. Most of you had some very specific things to say about Deer Meadows and some things that you really wanted us to do differently, and that's what we've done. Uh, just to give you an example, counselors, Pete told Exner, and I believe the mayor commented that the primary reason that the first iteration of Deer Meadows, excuse me, of Bull Run Terrace was unsuccessful is because the council did not have any assurance about how many units were going to be built. Well, you have that. We are artificially capping the maximum number of units of two hundred. And we do that because the council wanted that level assurance. We also do that to make sure that what you're seeing falls within the range of possibilities that we've analyzed for traffic impacts. There's a memo in the application where Tracy Brown explains that this is actually less than we could get density wise than under the current zoning, although we think we can do a better development project with the zoning that we're proposing. It's also less than the last plan that was was actually approved for this project back all the way back in two thousand eight, I believe, which was two hundred and twenty eight units. Counselors Petzold, Sheldon Walker, Exner, and Hokinson all raised as among their primary concerns, the lack of a connection to Debarco Road. Well, this plan includes that connection, and we've thought a lot about how to make that connection work. If you look at the plans, you'll see a median in there. The idea with that is to make sure that we're transitioning traffic from Highway twenty six into the city in that location as safely as possible, and we've worked really hard to make that work. And on that, I just want to make something clear. I know that some of you on the council don't like the idea of a connection to Barco Road. We didn't have one in the Deer Meadows application because that's a straight subdivision application. The requirements for this are different. This is a post acknowledgement plan amendment. And Oregon law requires us to propose connections that are consistent with the transportation system plan. That was not the case the last time. So we do not have the discretion, frankly, not to propose a connection to Barco Road. Uh, that's clear in the case law, it's clear in the statutes under the Oregon transportation planning rule. So while I understand that some of you may have hesitation about seeing a connection between Debarco Road and Highway twenty six, that is a policy that's already been adopted by the city council, and we frankly are not in a position through this process to change it. Counselor Sheldon Walker Exner, Hokinson, and Mayor Polium all said that the project need to have frontage improvements along Highway twenty six. This plan includes those frontage improvements. You're going to see sidewalks, street trees, and there's a requirement for an additional bus pullout on Highway twenty six. I think the best quote that sort of summed this up frankly was from Counselor Walker, and I went back and I watched that hearing, counselor. And what you said is if if you would have come in with Debarco Road and the highway improvements and have attempted to get that parkland closer to the existing park, I would have been all over supporting the development, and that's exactly what we've done. We listened real hard to what this council had to say. We have a predictable unit count. We have a connection between Debarco Road and Highway twenty six. We have more parkland than has ever been proposed before, more than is required under these criteria. Um, and that parkland is proposed to be right next to the existing Deer Point Park, so that'll be one contiguous piece of parkland. Uh, and we have frontage improvements on Highway twenty six. So in short, um, my message to use this, this is the plan that the council asked for us to provide on April twenty eighth. Um, we think it's a good plan. We've worked really hard with staff to take what was in front of you back in twenty twenty, which frankly isn't all that terribly different. A lot of the elements are the same. And put it into a form that staff was supportive of, and we thought you would be supportive of. Um, and so we're, we really are hoping to get our approval this time, and I just want to make a note, you know, Kelly went through and talked about the long history of this and how we've got pending Luba appeals. And the reason why we do it this way is not because we want to be aggressive or keep brow beating the city. We really do want to get something that the city will support. That's why we've put these Luba appeals on hold and gone back to the drawing board when we are able to get feedback from this council, and we appreciate that feedback. Um, and I hope that you appreciate the links we've gone to to address that feedback, and I hope that you will approve the project today. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Tracy, and then after that, uh, Mike Ard, and then you'll hear from Dave.
All right, Tracy, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Tracy Brown. I work at one seven oh seven five for Drive in Sandy. And for my part, I'm just going to spend a couple of minutes summarizing some key aspects of the project, and then if you have any questions for me, I can try to answer those. So again, on behalf of Roll Tide Properties, we want to thank the council for reconsidering the Bull Run Terrace subdivision application. As you may be aware, the property currently consists of two lots containing a combination of R one, R two, and R three, or R two and C three zoning. And this zoning configuration was established back in two thousand six with approval of the Vista Loop subdivision that changed the zoning but was never constructed on the site. The current application primarily includes both the subdivision and zone change. There's the specific area plan, the comp plan amendment that Kelly mentioned. But those are somewhat minor to the proposal. Four lots are proposed to be zoned R one low density residential to contain either single family residences or duplexes. One lot will be zoned R two to contain probably multifamily up to seventeen units. One lot will be zoned R three to contain up to a hundred and twenty seven units, and one lot will be zoned C three. And it'll be contain a mix of commercial and residential of up to forty eight units. So in addition to these lots, the proposal includes a parkland tract and two other tracks to contain stormwater facilities. The extension of Debarco Road through the site and the alignment of Street B to the south of the site, and both of these are in the transportation system plan. We're proposing to improve all unimproved street frontages that are adjacent to the property. In addition to dedicating one point seven five five acres of parkland, which is about a third of an acre larger larger than was previously proposed. As was mentioned to address previously her concerns, the applicant is intending to impose a cap of two hundred dwelling units on the site. And this cap was developed after reviewing the maximum unit count allowed under existing zoning, which we calculated based on a typical assumptions of two hundred and twenty six units. And in addition, what was basically approved with the Vista Loop subdivision, and that had up to two hundred and twenty eight units. So the two hundred units proposed is below both of those numbers. We feel that's a reasonable number. And it provides the city with some additional certainty. Um, and also because of substantial construction costs, it is a number that is would make the project feasible for the applicant to develop. And some of those construction costs are things like Debarco Road, frontage improvements, and all of the things that are part of the development application. So as in contained in the application materials, the route as reviewed by in the staff report, staff has indicated that the plan complies with all relevant code criteria. And in addition, we've reviewed the proposed conditions and generally agree with those proposed conditions in the staff report. The application addresses all the items staff and the council have asked of the applicant, including providing the larger park to right next to the existing Deer Point Park, extending Debarco Road through the site and imposing a unit count to add additional development certainty for the council and the community. The details on of development of lots five, six, and seven, this is the R two, R three, and C three will be determined at a future design review application, which would be submitted at some point following the super moratorium being lifted. Again, I'd like to thank the council for considering the revised Bull Run Terrace plan, and I urge you to approve the application as presented. I can try to address the chief tree retention. I wasn't exactly sure what you were referring to. You know, the area, what we're proposing in the application is a tree track primarily. And that's a group of trees in the northern part of the site. But the area of that tree tract is just contained within the lot. There's no specific called out areas. I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to. I'm not sure I answered the question exactly. I guess if if there are additional questions, I'd like to try to answer those. Not a turn it over to Dave.
Sure. Regarding the C3 property and its location next to a park now from where it was now, it'd be next to the park. What kind of access are we anticipating? Would it access from Debarco or would it have access from that? That side road comes in and wanders down or both, or how would it affect that neighborhood?
It's to be determined, but we would probably be requesting an access from Debarco. There may be a need for a secondary access or certainly emergency access from that side street. You know, like I said, we need to figure out all of the details. There will be a median portion of the way from intersection of the highway down a little bit of distance, so won't be close to the highway. But I think it started thinking that would be, there would need to be an access on Debarco. Certainly, if more of the site is developed with commercial, that would be most most desirable to have that access on Debarco. But again, that needs to be sorted out with the designer view application.
Understood, yeah.
Mike Ard will talk during our rebuttal. I just wanted to say quick response to your concern. He was talking about Highway 211 and a four way stop on 211, not Highway 26. He would have said that, I'm sure, but he can go into more detail on the bit.
Mayor and councilors, I really don't have anything of great substance to add to what has already been said. I'd love to reiterate it, but I'm sure you're no longer needed to hear it. But I did want to just come up here and personally thank you all for your willingness to reconsider this application. I know this has been a long road for all of us, some longer than others.
Did you say your name?
Oh, sorry. David A. 3630. So I think you could tell by the number of times we've come up here and the length of time that it's taken us to get to this point. You know, we're very committed to develop this project. I think we've shown a great amount of perseverance and coming up with a solution that hopefully works for the majority, as has already been pointed out. So I just wanted to, again, thank everyone for the willingness to reconsider. We genuinely feel that, you know, we're in this application, we're giving the city everything we possibly can on this property. We really want to develop this land and just usable property for the citizens of Sandy. And we hope that together tonight, we can walk this across the finish line and in that aspect. Thank you.
But since there were questions asked about my traffic impact study response memo.
Remember, state the name and address.
Mike Ard, Art Engineering. My address is 17790 Southwest Dodson Drive, Sherwood, Oregon 97140.
Apparently I read it wrong, so that might be an easy answer.
We didn't get to the question of why I wrote that memo, and just for the benefit of the the council, it's a little bit of a growing pains issue. So previously, we worked with John Replinger to review traffic impact studies, and when I submitted something that John didn't quite understand what I was doing or why I was doing it, he would typically get on the phone, call me and say, hey, Mike, you know, what's going on here? Can you walk me through this? And I would happily do that. So the number of times when John would come back and say, I disagree with Mr. Ard in this analysis was significantly reduced by the fact that we had those conversations and tried to come to consensus both in scoping and in the the review process. In this case, we haven't done that with BKS. It's a new company that's doing review. You got some formal comments into the record, and even though it's a little bit messy in terms of the record, we wanted to make sure that you're aware of the conversation that I had with BKS because I called them up when I got that response memo and said, hey, can we talk through these things? And and found that, for instance, there was one thing that they commented where they said the tabular values on page 13 don't match what's in the appendix. And we walked through that and determined that actually they do, and not sure what they were seeing when they did their initial review. There are a lot of pages there, so maybe they just copied the wrong one. So most of it's just making sure that you're not excluded from that conversation, that you're not getting half of the story and and that we're keeping a record that's complete since they did submit their review comments as part of the formal record. So I recognize that's messy for you, and most of it you can just safely ignore. With that said, you did have some some questions about the 211 at Debarco Road intersection. That was one in particular that we've talked about some kind of grand treatments for. Per my analysis, I showed that installation of stop signs would be sufficient there. We did see in DKS's review that the city would prefer not to install stop signs on that intersection on all four legs. The primary reason being that the southbound approach is on a downhill slope. The concern is that under snow and ice conditions, that could become problematic trying to get people to stop. The grade there is about six and a half percent, which is not super steep. It's within half a percent of the grade coming down from Mount Hood Ski Bowl, basically, where it's about a 6% grade there. So pretty comparable. Typically, we expect that that it would require snow plowing and and graveling under winter conditions, but it isn't something that precludes stopping. The the thing that puzzled me about it is that the the solution of installing the traffic signal and doing the $10 million project will also require people to stop on that downhill. So I found myself scratching my head just a little bit as to why that fix works, but the stop sign does not.
I assume that's not really relevant to our hearing.
Doesn't doesn't matter in terms of the.
We're very much interested in hearing about Debarco on 26 and what those plans.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to ask the question first.
Okay, go ahead.
I've been here long enough to have quite a bit of dog in the fight about trying to find a way to get a light there at 26 in Debarco.
Yes.
And of course, the warrants all say that we aren't there yet. How close do you think we are and what what a leftover would we have to be to make one to get ODOT to get that point?
I'm sorry, Mayor, would you like me to pause the clock?
As possible, please. Yeah. But he did. He did open up for questions.
All right. So the answer is probably not what you want to hear. We we're not at the point where we're meeting warrants, and we're probably not particularly close. With the development of this property, we showed that you're not hitting warrants, and there isn't a whole lot out here to add to that until we have the collector road that's extending to the south, which actually requires adding to the urban growth boundary and then establishing zoning on that property and developing things. As development occurs to the south, those trips, when they're trying to go west on 26, actually will have a relatively easy path when they come out to Barco to make the left turn onto Highway 26. And I expect that a high number of vehicles will want to do that. That will drive the need for a signal in the future, but that's fairly far down the road.
What I didn't see also is is there the design of that intersection, 26, Debarco. Is there anything that you're doing to or begin the possibility of putting a light in there? So things like shoulder widths, turning, center lanes, that kind of thing. Improvements that we're going to be putting there, those would be pushing our way towards a better and cheaper process for getting a light in that spot.
There are some lane improvements that are included in the development plan, and those would be something that was useful when a traffic signal ultimately goes in at that location as well.
Real quick, Kelly, it's all out of whatever.
Okay, okay. Okay. Elaborate on what's happening, what will happen at 26 in Debarco under this proposal?
I'm going off of memory, which is always a dangerous thing, but there is a southeastbound right turn lane from the highway onto Debarco Road. The Debarco Road approach would have a left turn lane and a right turn lane, I believe, so two separate lanes on that side street approach, and then the highway westbound median left turn lane to allow turning onto Debarco.
We're going to have a protected left coming off Debarco onto 26.
Yes, and I am confirming, looking at this plan that was just dropped in front of me, that my recollection is correct there. I guess I didn't mention that there's also a southeastbound left turn lane on to Vista Loop Drive, but I believe that's in place currently. Sorry about that distraction. What was your question again?
Turning left into Barco onto 26. Is it protected or are you going straight into traffic?
It is not protected. Absent a traffic signal, there isn't a way to protect that left turn movement. So similar to Langen.
There's no more lane there because of the Vista Loop, so you have to go all the way. It's going to go out.
That is a question that deserves some detailed investigation. So the reason that I say that is that under existing conditions, there's a dedicated left turn pocket, and no, you would typically not turn into the median from as a two-stage left turn, we typically call it. With that said, the volume of traffic turning onto Vista Loop Drive, depending on how often that is used, it may be possible to make that turning movement. If it is possible to do two-stage left turns, that obviously improves service for Debarco Road. The primary movement that we're expecting to see at Debarco Road because of the fact that this is a highway cut through per the TSP that connects 211 to Highway 26 is the right turn movement from Debarco onto the highway for all those vehicles that came from Highway 211, or conversely, the left turn from the highway onto Debarco Road and down to 211. Neither of those involves that left turn movement from Debarco out onto 26, which is again, one of the reasons that our volumes don't get high enough to warrant signalization. And it doesn't make a lot of sense for people that are coming up Highway 211 to turn onto Debarco only to make a left turn onto 26. If they were going that direction, they just will stay straight on on Highway 211 to begin with. So there isn't really a meaningful way that we can divert traffic and create that demand artificially, which I did look to see if there's a way we could do that, because I know you guys are interested in signalization.
Yeah, and I will say the interest is more for people who live in Sandy and live in that area trying to turn on 26. My interest is people coming from down south trying to cut through the city.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, did you finish answering this question? Yeah. So you may kind of alluded to it since we're having a Q and A. I just have a question. How do you guys account in your traffic study for your daily trips a day? For everyone that's running Waze, Google Maps, whatever it is, that's going to get diverted on. And you kind of spoke to it a little bit, like where are those numbers coming from and and how 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 modern are they?
I will attempt to answer your question to the extent that I understood it. If you need to clarify, please interrupt me.
Everybody, oh, yeah, everybody's running, well, I should say everybody, but a vast majority of people that are going through a community are running some kind of traffic navigation aid.
Absolutely, I do.
Smartphones, whatever it is, right? And our traffic commonly at that intersection tonight will back up on the weekends, right? So what those aids do is, as I know, you know, with like 205 and all those others, it pushes them out on the side roads, right? Because it's the most efficient way. And so that's that's what I'm wondering is how do we account for that on the street? Because that's that's when people start getting agitated because they've been set in traffic, speeds go up, risk to the public increases, all of that is my thoughts.
Yeah, interestingly, there there are kind of dynamics that work opposite each other involved with that. So prior to ways coming onto the scene, people got into traffic and they really got agitated because they didn't know what options they had, or they happened to be local citizens who knew the the back routes, and they were making their way around on those efficient free flowing routes. Anyway, I'll give the example that returning from Mount Hood Meadows one day, I turned just south of Sandy and cut through on some backroads to the south of town that allowed me to get over to where I was trying to go without coming through the city of Sandy at all. And that's something that I wouldn't have known about if it wasn't for ways. With that said, traffic in general tends to flow, we like to say, like water. Where there is a blockage, traffic makes its way around that blockage. And particularly where you have systemic problems that occur over and over again, people become vigilant in finding their alternate routes to avoid that sort of thing. So even in the pre-Waze era, it was it was something that involved a little bit of work, and it wasn't something that you would do unless you were a regular commuter, but people would find their way around. With the new technology, we have the ability to reroute at an instant for an event that is ahead that we haven't even seen yet. It does change the world a bit. With that said, the the rerouting that occurs using ways is typically rerouting from a congested route to a less congested route. That means that when the secondary route becomes congested, the software stops sending people that direction. There's again, a little bit of a balance that occurs there. Sometimes you can get congestion on a side street. I'm thinking of a location in West Lynn where this happens. The I-205 freeway backs up and traffic moves on to a two-lane local road that goes to a stop sign. And pretty quickly, you've got three quarters of mile of vehicles lined up waiting to get through a stop sign where it's really hard to make the turn, even if you're first in line. So it backs up very quickly, and it becomes not an alternate route anymore in the software. It isn't something that we can cure completely. As traffic engineers, we recognize that it creates what are called Nash equilibrium which are sometimes suboptimal, which I think is probably the heart of your question, that that some of these diversions are things that you wouldn't necessarily like to see as a community. In terms of average daily traffic conditions, we typically try to design the transportation system so that there isn't the need for this overflow. And when we see that there is the need for overflow, we accommodate that by looking at what is the functional capacity of this intersection, how many people need to divert in order to make it work, and what happens when they do divert to an alternate route. That occurs to some extent right now on Langen, so for the vehicles making northbound left turns on the Langen, they may connect over to 10 Ike, or they may take Debarco and go to the west and come out on 211 instead to to make those turning movements at a traffic signal rather than at the unsignalized approach. I don't know how much more I can tell you about that. We do try to account for it to the extent that we can.
My my second.
We're aware of the curse.
Is the money, the dollar sign, right, for improvement on 211 is tied to those daily trips, correct?
It is, yes.
So it seems like if we're not being, I mean, I was wondering, how do I know we're barely being compensated for those trips?
I I don't know how explicitly I alluded this to this in my response, but I did touch on the fact that the the per trip fee that that's been contemplated there at that intersection is based off of some outdated numbers in terms of volumes and in terms of what the project might entail. It came out of the 2011 TSP, and the the numbers cited were for year 2029 conditions. In order to get to the volume that's projected there in year 2029, we would need to see 70% growth between now and 2029. That's really substantial. It's far in excess of the ODOT growth patterns that were projected on Highway 211. So in my mind, my expectation is that you're probably going to be able to do something that is less intensive at that intersection. And in fact, I demonstrated that installation of stop signs, which cost nearly nothing in the grand scheme of things, could be sufficient. It may be that if you ultimately do decide to put in stop signs, you would want to put in rumble strips on the approach so that, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but sometimes when you come up on a stop sign, you'll hear and if you're not slowing down, you get the feeling that you're accelerating. So some of those treatments help enhance safety and help produce compliance with the stop signs. But for various reasons, I think that the the traffic projection numbers are maybe off the the fix, I'll call it the full meal fix for the intersection that's $10 million, may have a budget that's more than what you ultimately determine is necessary, at least for that timeframe. And if we're looking out again 20 years into the future, maybe that is the right thing, but maybe there's more opportunity to cover the expenses that are associated too. In terms of the project fee that's being placed on this project at $15,000 plus dollars per trip and 17 trips, totaling out to $270,000, that's half the price of a traffic signal right there that's put onto this developer. So that doesn't necessarily include the lane additions, which I think are probably the primary reason that that's a $10 million project. As you imagine, driving down 211, the embankments on both sides just drop off. So trying to add a right turn lane or a left turn lane out there means putting in a whole bunch of fill, compacting it so that it's usable as a roadway, adding guardrails to it, possibly acquiring right of way. And it gets pretty expensive pretty quickly, and that that's why I think it's appropriate to probably as part of your TSP refresh that's occurring anyway right now, revisit the the numbers in terms of traffic volume projections and in terms of what that improvement is going to cost.
All right, let's get back on the clock.
All right, let's get back on the clock.
Yeah. Sorry, I love to talk traffic and I can do it all night if you'd let me.
Great.
Kind of interesting.
Anything else that's pressing that I should address before I sit down?
I'll give the two minute warning. Thank you. Is that good presentation? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. With that, we'll move ahead to public testimony. Here are guidelines for those who may wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. Even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at C I dot sandy dot O R dot U S. And staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. Testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand at the appropriate time to indicate that you'd like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Oh, call on each person when it is their turn to speak. Each participant will have up to three minutes to testify. And Jeff will let you know, we have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules require that each person state their name and address for the record. I will now call on any testimony in favor of the proposal. Reminder, state your name and mailing address for the record. It'll be provided up to three minutes and Jeff will give you that twenty second warning. I would now call on any testimony in favor of the proposal. I'm looking online.
I'm taking a look on my mirror. And I do not see any raises. Okay.
Moving ahead, I will now call on testimony against the proposal. Another reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll be provided three minutes to speak and Jeff will give you a twenty second warning. I now call on any. On any proposed comments testimony against a proposal.
Mayor, I do see one hand up online. This person signed in. It's Kendall. Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Welcome, Kendall. Please remind, remember to state your name and address for the record.
Kendall Pelton, Sandy, Oregon. I'm opposed to this development for many reasons. One is. Community safety, personal people out on that highway, putting multifamily is. I don't believe a wise idea. We already have too many deaths across twenty six. And the weekends, it just is a bottleneck right through there. It's just begging for more death. The other one is the green space that's being taken away. Is far greater than what's being added. And then it's not only that, it's being added at the city's expense. So does the city have the ability and the money and the budget to maintain it and updo it depending on how it's developed? For that, say, if it were proposed to go in. That's a lot of family in there for that park or whatever green space it's developed to. Do we have the budget and the ability to upkeep that? What I I know that the future development is what would determine what housing situation is in there, but. Also, the green space. How does that look? Like they had talked about swales and. Road buffers or whatever. I don't personally find Bornstead area to be very inviting. For people unless you actually live there. Because it's very crowded with all the streets and cars on both sides. It's very hard to get. A normal car through there. So I don't know that that's life safety issues. I mean. Counselor Smallwood would know how it is to get a fire truck up in there. It's probably not easy. Um, let's see. I think that's the most of it. It's just that the. The load that it's putting a a density of people on both. Twenty six and then down on Debarco on two eleven. I don't find. This development to be in the better interest. It seems to be adding more load and more. Issues that we already have a great amount of. And the last one I wanted to say is I'm really bummed that the city engineer is not here, especially when they. Had disagreements with their proposal.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Kendall. Really appreciate your public testimony tonight. All right, I'll continue to call on any testimony against a proposal. Reminder to raise your hand if you're in attendance, dial star nine if you're by phone or raise your hand by Zoom.
Hey, Mayor, I see a hand up with the name KJ. You should be able to unmute yourself now. As the mayor said, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome, KJ.
Hi, this is Keely Jensen on Tickle Creek Road, and I just want to say that I agree with Kendall.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that testimony. Continue, I'm continuing to call on testimony against the proposal.
Hey, Mayor, I do not see any other reasons. Okay.
I now will move forward and call for neutral testimony. These are general comments neither for nor against a proposal. A reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. It'll be provided up to three minutes and Jeff will give you a twenty second warning.
Mayor, I do not see any other race.
All right. Thank you to everyone who testified this evening. With that, I will now call for the staff recap and recommendation that Kelly.
Yes, sir.
But I just want to point out, there was a comment that came at five ten today in the record.
Okay.
That most of us probably didn't read or see. Would it be appropriate to read it? To have it respond. I'm just worried that it gets dropped when it comes in that.
Sure, if you'd like to.
And this doesn't necessarily reflect my opinion. I'm just reading it. Okay. This is from Ray and Brew. R U E H R D A N Z. See it online. Dear Planning Commission and City Planning Staff and City Councilors, I've lived in the Deer Point neighborhood for the past eleven years. I moved to the city of Sandy because of its small town feel, the lower population compared to many other cities in the urban growth boundary. We, as a community, have seen more and more cars and homeless people moving into the area. The traffic in this area has gotten severely worse over the last few years. There are times when you have to wait several minutes just to get on to twenty six. This is not acceptable and is only going to get worse when you add. When you add in more neighborhoods like the proposed one at the Bull Run Terrace subdivision. You all need to think about the ramifications on the residents that currently live here and not the ones that will be moving here. I have no. I have no problem with the city. Growing, but make sure it is done correctly. Please make sure that the builders will adhere to the original plans and not build any apartment complexes. I have no problems with single-family dwellings or low-density houses. Also, when we built here, we were told that the park across the street was going to be doubled in size. There was a plan to have a walking path, basketball courts and a playground in the park. The new plans by the builders don't have a park at all and have homes, houses built there instead. With every other neighborhood in the area, there is a park in the middle of it for the kids and families to use. The original plan should still be intact and not be replaced by more houses. I don't understand why the citizens of the city of Sandy have to argue against building new subdivision housing areas. The amount of traffic that is going to be in the neighborhood of Deer Point is going to be at dangerous levels. The cars in the neighborhoods across the city are already packing side streets to get away from Highway twenty six. But the new proposal of Deer Meadows is going to be a problem with no outlet to Highway twenty six. All the houses in that neighborhood will have to all go through Deer Point. This is going to increase the traffic to an already congested neighborhood. There's no outlet on Debarco because of the expense the builders will have to incur. There has to be other outlets out of the neighborhood. Please take into consideration the citizens and their concerns and not just focus on the money that will be coming into the city. Scott Ruandens.
Thank you. All right, I will now move forward and call for the staff recap and recommendation, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, there was actually, thank you for reading that, Counselor Hokinson. That was really good. Moving forward, just so everybody knows, our submission deadline is going to be four P M on the day of the hearing, so. If anybody's listening at home, this will be the last land use application heard by the planning commission or city council. That doesn't have a cutoff period for submitting your written testimony. So that will kind of help with last minute testimony coming trickling in kind of like that. So we did receive four public comments that are all in the packet, two of which were included with the original publication. And then two, including the one that Counselor Hokinson just read that were submitted since the original publication of the packet. But they're all, all four of them are included for the city council to review and are part of. The record before us tonight. I I want to point out a few things. I want to hit upon one thing that Mike said that. Mister Ard said that I'm not disputing, but I just want to add a little bit more clarity to it. And then I just want to once again talk about a few of the big benefits. So I just want to be very clear, and I think most people understand this at this point, but. It sounds like based on some of the written testimony and then one of the verbal testimony we just heard, there's a little confusion around multifamily. The existing zoning allows for multifamily. So even if there was no zone change, anybody that owns that property could propose multifamily dwellings. I just want to make sure it's very clear that. You know, the the amount of multifamily being proposed by the applicant tonight. Maybe more than would be allowed under the existing zoning, but even the existing zoning would have multifamily dwelling units. So I want to be very clear about that. The next thing I wanted to talk to about, because I saw this in several written comments and also in the verbal or testimony tonight. There is no green space currently. That's just property that's undeveloped. I think in all of the United States, but especially in Oregon where I'm more of an expert. You know, people have property development rights. Now there are restrictions that can be placed on those properties, but just because something today is. Vegetation or tree doesn't mean that tomorrow, once it gets approval for development, won't be so. What I will say is that there actually would be proposed green space that would be dedicated with the parkland dedication with the proposal. So that that is part of what the applicant's proposing is that. Almost an acre and almost two acres, just under two acres of that land would be green space and be dedicated as such. I did, I did also want to point out for one of the people that testified just now. That the city, while the city traffic engineers, D K S associates are not here tonight. They did submit a letter into the record. And I captured all of their concerns with the findings and conditions. So we have addressed D K S associates' concerns as they presented them. A few other little things I wanted to point out, the traffic signal, I would like to remind everybody that Miss Ard's correct that. You know, it would take other development probably to the south of this, that's potentially outside the U G B. There's also a lot of land to the west of this down like Jacoby Road and Langen Sand that could develop, that could put pressures on the signal warrants. But we also have to remember, north of Highway twenty six. This Salute Drive has a lot of development potential up there and a lot of potential trips that could use this intersection at some point. So while the, while the warrants might be farther out than this application, I don't want to get too carried away with saying the warrants are. Way down the road, I would need to speak with D K S associates to determine how many additional trips that intersection would make it. A signal warrant. I just want to be very clear that Miss Art is correct, that it's not warranted now, but I don't think we can say at this meeting that. You know, those signal warrants might not happen in the nearest future. And then the last thing I just want to leave on is I, you know, I think. The applicant's attorney did do a good job of summarizing the differences in the proposals. And capturing some of the concerns that the city council and staff had from previous iterations. I would say that in my belief and my professional analysis of the application is the benefits. With the Barca Road and the highway improvements, which by the way, if you do have highway improvements, that does actually help safety on the highway. Will actually force some people to slow down. We are looking at also outside of this project. To do a speed zone investigation study from Ten Ike out to the U G B line as we discussed at. The November seventh work session on the T S P. So we're going to be looking at dropping those speeds anyways, and we are looking at some other studies with the T S P. To address some of the traffic safety concerns east of Ten Ike on Highway twenty six. And then I think with the park also. And just with the proportional sheriff fee to Highway two eleven. And Debarco Road and some of the other things that the applicant's proposing, I really do think. The benefits with this proposal outweigh any of the perceived negative costs, at least from a. Planning perspective. I'm not trying to minimize the impacts to the residents in that neighborhood. But I am saying that from kind of the bigger picture. Planning perspective and our T S P, our parks master plan and the overall development code. My professional opinion is the benefits outweigh any perceived negative costs, so. I'll leave it at that.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. Questions for Kelly before we go to rebuttal.
Yeah. Can they just to couple of comments that I didn't respond to, just if you can, yes, no, even. The first was, can the city develop the parks that are being allocated? Do we have? The question was, do we have the financial means to finish and develop those parks?
I mean, I think what I can say to that is I think. Maybe, but what I can say to that is the city council did a really good job of being proactive and passing some bigger parks fees recently. So I think. I think our ability to develop more parkland in the nearest future will be much greater than it was six months ago without those fee adoptions.
The other one was comparing this this village to Bornstead Village in terms of roads, thickness, the density and also the the roads. How how can you compare and contrast what these roads will be like versus what we have in Bornstead Village? Will they be the same width wider?
That's a good question. The local streets will be the same. It's a fifty foot street section with twenty eight feet of asphalt. So that one street, you know, the extension of Fawn. Debarco Road. Is going to be designed a little bit different than some of the ones in Village, but it would be, I think, comparable to probably. Comparable to sections of Cascadia Village Drive, the one that runs east to west through Bornstead Village. And then Street B would be comparable to. Also Cascadia Village Drive closer to Jacoby Road where there is no median. Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. In the memo from the attorney, he talks about a hundred and eighty days, they can't get the proper financing and there was some. Just disagreement about us requiring them to get. To dedicate the parkland. Was that addressed? I'm not seeing where that was, that disagreement was addressed.
So I'll I'll put it this way, I think. When I originally wrote the staff report up, I didn't put a deadline associated with it. I think there was some flaws in that. Because it is kind of confusing. If you look at the staff report that I published last Monday, it's kind of like, when would this be required to occur? So that that was the modification that I made on Thursday on the seventeenth was to put in a deadline for when they would have to dedicate it by. I think the applicant and. I think their attorney is just pointing out some parts of the code that they think would alleviate them from having a deadline that's not associated with a plat. I think the confusing part to me is that part of this is a zone change and therefore. Thirty days from the second reading, the ordinance of its past, it would be zone parks and open space anyways. So at that point, why don't we just put it on the clock and have it dedicated within a hundred and eighty days? I I I see where their attorney is coming from. I would still stand with my recommended condition of approval and just require it to be dedicated within a hundred and eighty days.
On the staff report, it talked about, and this is, I guess, a question for both you and or the developer. On the staff report, it said that under the existing maximum number of dwelling units based on the existing zoning. You could already do a hundred and ninety eight dwellings, not including all the commercial, which. There seemed to be some assumption that it wouldn't just be the the like, like the other commercial. Allowing twenty units per acre, which would basically give you another fifty units. So that would get you two hundred and fifty units per. Two hundred and fifty units under the existing zone. And so. What my question is, is if you can do two, you know, two forty, two fifty, you know, I I. Now I'll quibble, but you know, obviously over two hundred units. That's being proposed with the existing zoning, what's the rationale for needing to change the zoning? So drastically, and that's a question for both of you, I guess.
I'd like to, you know, I'll leave the majority of that to the developer since it's their proposal, but what I will say is. I think as I said in here, I'm just kind of reading what I said. I said it's potentially possible, you know, I I. And that's to the doubling efforts of House Ball two thousand and one. I I agree with you, Counselor Walker, that. And that's why I said, you know, finding the exact amount of dwelling units is very difficult. Because while mathematically 198 dwelling units minus the C3 land is possible, it's probably, that's not how it would probably develop. It'd probably be a little bit less than that. But then with the unknown on the C3 land, I think, I think it would balloon above 200. The one thing I can say with this proposal that is way more beneficial than the existing zoning is, as you'll all remember with House Ball 2001, they, the applicants don't have to supply any more parking than they would for a single family home. So if you did maximize the land and just jammed it with a bunch of duplexes on really small lots, which would be allowed in those zones, it's, it's conceivable that you'd run into much worse parking situation than just allowing more of the land to be higher zoned, like to R3 and allow the buildings to be taller with more parking. I don't know if that would happen, but I'm just saying that is conceivable.
Apartments notoriously have poor, you know, amounts of parking that, you know, I mean, look at you know, Vista, there's, there's just, that's my understanding. Of course, I don't, I haven't lived in an apartment in a long time, but that, you know, the parkings around multifamily apartments seems to be a problem already. So that's
Yeah, I mean, you could be.
I, I agree, you know, I, I understand your
Yeah, but I, I, yeah, that could be, that could be true in certain circumstances, especially in larger cities where they don't have as much parking standards as we do, I think. But I will say that I think the time will tell, but I think there's the potential for subdivisions with a lot of duplexes that are jammed in with the same parking requirements that single family homes would have traditionally had. I think there's the potential that those will even lead to worse parking situations than we see with multifamily development. And then like I said, only time will tell if that plays out that way or not, but I could see that being the case. Because we are still, we are still allowed to have parking standards per number of bedrooms per dwelling unit, kind of like what we do in the code right now. The limitation is that we can't require any more off-street parking spaces for a duplex than we do a single family home. So I think there could be a negative, that could be lead to a negative result in the future for parking.
Yeah. Can I hear from the developers?
They sell a rebuttal time. They sell 10 minutes rebuttal and we have Q and A for both. I'm not sure why we're in Q and A right now, to be honest. Let's go ahead and get to our rebuttal. And then if you guys want to address it in the rebuttal, that'd be great, or we can open up and ask a question again when it's time for Q and A.
Yeah, I'm done. And yeah, I was just answering some questions and I, I can certainly answer more. Right? Yeah, I'm finished.
So we're open now to 10 minutes of rebuttal by the applicant. Jeff will give you a two minute warning.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I don't have any rebuttals to the public comments. I think that Kelly did a really, really good job of summarizing what my response would be to those. To the question about why this configuration, I, I was not here for the first go around of it. But I did look at the zoning map and I did look at what we proposed. And if you look at the current zoning map, the multifamily is tucked farther back down and away from closer into the neighborhood. And I think what this allows you to do just from my own observation, allows you to get your commercial and mixed use out closer to the highway and then transition into higher density residential, lower density residential, and eventually single families. You go back towards the existing neighborhood. But I brought Dave up here to kind of give a rundown on it.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah. So part of it is the existing zoning is a result of a prior developer's plan that the zoning change was approved, but then the subdivision was never developed. So when we purchased the property, you know, that's what we started with was a zone, a zoning setup that was met for another plan. Right? So that's part of it. The current zone just isn't ideal for what we're wanting to do. The other part is that we're planning to, we're partnered with basically a multifamily builder who specializes in apartment complexes. It's very proficient with those. We're much more interested in multifamily compared to duplexes. And I would agree with Kelly that even though House Ball 2001 allows for duplexes on any single family lot, it potentially, and in my opinion, likely creates a pretty congested neighborhood for those parking reasons that, that Kelly pointed out. So those are the, those are the two reasons that we kind of came forth with the zone change request.
Apologize, I forgot to ask and just ran and sat down. Does any councillor have any questions before we conclude?
Yeah. That's where we're at. So before we close the hearing, this is kind of our last opportunity, but of course, if we have more questions for staff, fine. This is kind of our last chance for the applicant.
All right.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Looking for a move to.
I will for a motion to close the public hearing.
Close public hearing.
There are second.
Second.
Motion by councillor Ex for a second by councillor Sheldon to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Opposed nays or a thumbs down. Motion carries. I will close this public hearing at 8:38. With that, we will go into discussion. Let's get the first reading out of the way and then go into discussion. And because then what we'll, to see you guys on the process, we still have to do a motion to accept the first reading and the second. It just, we get, we get the first reading out of the way.
Before we go into that, what, what is this follow-up? We got to pass the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, fine. You want to explain the process of first reading, second reading?
This is where it gets very technical lately. I'd rather our attorney answer that.
Evening, Mayor and councillors. Yes, as, as Kelly suggested, this, this application has multiple components to it that have different requirements. And so part of it, like the Conference of Plan Amendment and the zone changes have to be approved by ordinance. And then the subdivision is just approved by order. And so in order to approve this entire application, you have to approve both. To approve a ordinance, you have to do two readings unless you have a unanimous approval at the first reading. And so we're anticipating that you will do your first reading of the ordinance this evening and approve that. And then at your second reading, you could approve the ordinance or not and approve the subdivision by order or not.
Or we could do all three tonight.
That's, that's correct.
Well, do we have to do the approval of the first reading without doing an approval of the development or do we need the development to be approved to do the ordinance?
I need a chart.
Right. If, if you do all three tonight, or if you, or if you spread them out regardless, you need to approve the ordinance before you approve the subdivision because the subdivision findings are contingent on some of the the zone changes.
Okay. So we should have discussion before the first reading because between unanimous, there is no second.
But, but the order, we just go to the first reading and then we go to discussion. We have to have a motion and a second and discussion to adopt. I'm just trying to get it out.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And I've changed it then how we've done it the past. I'm just trying to get a little bit better at it. First reading, please.
Okay, Mayor, this is ordinance 2022-27. An ordinance amending the City of Sandy comprehensive plan map by changing the comprehensive plan map designation for 1.755 acres and changing the zoning map designation for 15.91 acres. That's 13.68 net acres and adopting the Bull Run Terrace specific area plan.
We're now open for discussion. A couple of things I just want to jump in and get us started with on this. We've gone through, it's been a process with this property. And I'm someone that's been on the record with different things. We've talked about 26 and the Barco and those items. I totally hear with where we're at on, on this. I mean, that's just really not something under consideration. But it's been a long-term council goal, even previous to me being on council. As I look at this development and the process, I think we're really landing at a really good spot. We're accomplishing the Debarco to 26 connection that's been talked about. We even had some public testimony that was right at the last second here that talked about the need for additional connections for existing neighbors here in Sandy to be able to get on the Highway 26 specifically from Debarco. We don't know when the signal improvements will be coming in, but we continually talk about development paying for itself. That will be an additional signal that we'll get assistance with to be building out for our community. Additionally, we've talked about the proportional, proportional, God, I'm bad with words, expense for 211 and Debarco connection improvements. This park is going to be increased to a 1.755 acre park that's available for the community. We are capping the units. Now we've had debate about that, but we've heard from Kelly, who's our planning director. Give or take, we're going to be hovering around 200 units. That's the significant from even what the original zoning, as we've talked about, would allow for this property. Additionally, and to kind of close out, we get the frontage improvements as well. So we're getting significant infrastructure improvements for our community. We're getting a piece of land that will develop, developed in what I believe is a much better fashion than what some alternatives possibly could be as well. So I'm, I'm very pro this proposal.
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I really believe that the developer has listened to what we said we were concerned about. And I as well, the last time this thing came to us, a number of things that just, I didn't particularly think that was in the right mode and the right place and some of the problems that I saw were completely resolved at this time. So to me, I think that really bodes well that the developer listened to us and brought those things to a place where I'm really feeling pretty good about it. Secondly, in overall, this is a good place to put housing. It does some things for us that we've wanted to do for a long time. I remember working with Tracy back in 2000 and sorry, Jeremy. I remember working with Tracy back in 2006 and eight when this thing was first proposed. And for a different developer and really wanting to see this thing move forward, the park was one of those things that we thought would be enlarged and built quickly. And in the meantime, that thing has sat there with weeds and basically a place for people to look at, maybe a few dogs, maybe the kids playing around, but really low use of a really well-positioned piece of park. Another thing that I thought when I saw this, this past group was that the kinds of changes that the zoning is proposed to do makes some real good sense. And I look at this from the view of the Deer Point Phase 2, which is the piece that is up adjacent to Highway 26. When I buy and sell houses in that particular development, the houses that are up alongside Highway 26 are really not for single family, although they, we built a single family houses in there. They rent quickly and they sell poorly. People don't spend a lot of time in there. I've sold two houses on that row that faces Highway 26. Since it's been in planted or built, I guess is the right word. And because of the fact that there's a fair amount of noise on Highway 26, people who are thinking more about building and living in single family, like the idea of being farther away from Highway 26 and they see this single family low density is farther away from the highway than you would ever see on the other zoning. I also am very impressed. I know that I'm becoming the stormwater guy, but I think that the extensive work that the developers put into the stormwater improvements, the, the ponding, the swales, the the green spaces and all those things have really, I think, have been not just a response to what we were concerned about last time, but an overbuild, if you will, the things that really makes some sense there. I'm really excited to see some of these things put into place. The mayor talked about some things that I would say as well, but I think for me, it makes a lot of sense to put this in. The last thing I would say is I do live on almost the corner of Langen Sand and Highway 26. And I hear screeches, I hear a lot of problems on that particular junction. It is canted awkwardly. And whenever I come in or go out of that particular stop sign, it really becomes problematic when you think about all of the highway traffic coming out around that corner that you really can't see very well. And having Debarco in a much straighter view between left and right, when you come out of this development, I think will be an advantage. And I think some of the difficulties that people are seeing on Langen Sand will lighten up. Because it will move to Debarco. The other things I'm just, is because of what Mayor's already said.
All right. Further conversation. Lori.
Yeah, I just, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to add a whole lot because I think between the mayor and, and Carl, most things have been said, but you know, when I look at the, first of all, thanks to the developer. You know, you did listen to some of the concerns that council had and, and came back with a project that I think most people on this council could support. So I am excited and think it'll be great to get Highway 211, you know, that intersection built in a little bit better. I'm not super excited about having another access to Highway 26, but, but I, I can appreciate and see the need for it. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I want to say, you know, a lot of what you said, Stan. You know, we're, we're voting, this first one here is zone changes, subdivision. You know, I look at, thank you, the developer and the staff that worked on it, came back with and listened. I think they brought that out, you know, exactly those different points and, and you know, remembering the, the issues that we've had in the past and come up with a bigger, a better product. I was, and I'll get Lori to smile and shake her head, but I was on this when, on planning, when we actually approved it the first time called this loop south, this loop south and this loop north. And so, and then approved it again and then extended it many times. I think this is actually a better product than when that had occurred back then. And I was sitting on the park's board with Kathleen when we talked about, and it was branded several times when people would come in to do that about making sure that park was adjoining and that was developed and for the looking of that. And to answer one of the people that spoke about that park and that type of thing. One reason why that park hadn't been developed for many different reasons, but one was we're waiting to get this development done because it was right there. So that we can develop the entire park at one time versus developing half of it was another. So I, I like the creativiness of changing the zoning for that so that we can go ahead and do that regardless of whatever then comes up in the future, how long it may be able to take if the funds are available to do so. Because we all have had that whole picture there. So and then the additional Debarco and 211 part of that. It probably affects me the most in the negative side of it because I live, as you all know, right on that road, right? And so then there's other traffic mitigations that we can look at in the future, but but for the TSP and everything way better than the last proposal that was presented to us. I did not have any of those things in beneficial to our community.
Right. I have, I have some, some ideas that I'd like to run past you for possible additions to the conditions that are proposed. And I'm curious for your immediate feedback. They're all minor, but it seemed like they'd be important to people living in the area. It's okay. And I don't know if we're in the right because we, we're approving the overlay. Are the conditions associated with the overlay? Or zone change or can I just put them in now? You can figure out where to add them later if, if there, if anyone buys into it.
I had some ideas that that would be in the cert.
Yeah, that's, that could get pretty complicated. Because I don't, you know, the applicant has, I don't know.
So it's going to depend on the condition.
Sure, sure. We should apply to. So I think they're going to be pretty straightforward because they've already been mentioned, but I didn't see them written in the conditions. So people talked to them. So one of them is a median on Debarco at 26. I didn't see that spelled out in the actual condition.
It would be because it's yes, that it's, that is in the findings. So
Okay, all right, good.
So some things, if, if we have already addressed them in the So some things, if if we have already addressed them in the findings or like in the traffic letter or uh and we said like it meets. The requirements for like second distance for that one, for example, it is, it doesn't have to be added as a condition, so it's already a finding basically saying it's the requirement.
Thank you. All right, so um related to the C three zone. Uh because that's commercial, we don't know what's gonna end up in there. We have houses right near it. It seems like we should have, if we don't already encode, force it. Conditions of how lighting is set up, so it doesn't disturb or devalue the neighborhoods, the neighbors around it. And same with the location of mechanical equipment, so that we don't have noise from a heavy industrial unit that's spilling over into. A refrigerator or something that's flowing over and similar with the trash that things get located, so we do not disturb those neighboring residences.
Yeah, so in all those three particular things, um dark sky, screening for noise and on-site reviews. And trash enclosure, so they would all have to be done. And that's sort of, so when we do a designer view on that site, I hundred percent agree with you, those are all the addresses at the time that. Would have to be addressed.
Okay, and the last one has to do with the walkway along twenty six and lighting in terms of making sure whatever lighting is installed on that walkway. That it would be compatible with our downtime quarter or whatever our standard is at that time.
And that one is an interesting one. That would have to actually be negotiated without outside of this process.
Really easy.
Okay, there you go.
Uh any other comments before we?
I just wanna real quickly uh just say thank you guys for this week and and really the work of us.
I'll make uh one last comment. Um. My uh recollection of the last time this came as dear point was that um. Was that. I appreciate the idea that we've got this park and the debacle connection, but what. My understanding is is that we, you know, we should have this park regardless of. Of the zone change, just that's that's, it was in the ninety seven plan, and so I I guess I disagree with the idea that this is kind of being. Something, you know, that we're being given. It's something that we, you know, that was required under the um existing ninety seven plan. And and the same with the the debacle road, gonna be in a really a helpful thing. But again, with the existing zoning that we have, we should be able to require that vote. And I understand, so so first of all, I appreciate you all, including all that, because you know, it's really helpful. But my biggest concern here is that we have a comp plan where we have been. Since we adopted it in ninety seven and I guess on this parcel in two thousand and six, I'm curious what the original zoning was in. Ninety seven to two thousand and six that got changed and evidently it wasn't to your liking or whatever. But what we seem to be doing is kind of cutting, taking a lot of our lower density zoning and changing it incrementally. To higher density and especially in this case where we're going, you know, pretty, pretty significant acreages of going from low. At medium to medium and high and commercial um that will, you know, basically again give us over two hundred, almost two hundred apartments. And what I'm concerned about in the big picture is when we start doing our comp plan. We want a balance and we we want a balance. We need these apartments, we need duplexes, we need townhomes, we need single-family homes. We need a balance of all these things. And so what's been happening though is that as we take the lower densities and change it to higher density. We don't really have the opportunity to um change things unless the uh a landowner really wants it. Change things from high density to lower density. Um those I could, you know, see if we redid our comp plan and redid our zoning map. People would have a takings uh option, I would assume. So that's that's a concern that I have is that we can only go, you know, that we're only going higher and higher densities and not. Being able to move the other way to kind of maintain that balance that is so important. And so those are the kind of the concerns that I have about this proposal uh is that just, you know, losing that balance and and basically just kind of. Moving it from low to high um really changes the whole makeup of that neighborhood and. I think those um you know, that in this case it. I was given that you could get to almost, you know, over two hundred units. And we could still be requiring the debacle and the park thing. I I kind of feel like that's. A zone change is a zone change isn't ness- you know, completely necessary to get that, uh in my opinion, but. Those are my comments, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make recommendation.
I was gonna make a motion.
I'm gonna make the recommendation of the motion. Um I moved to approve the first reading of the ordinance number two thousand twenty two dash twenty seven. In hope, let's uh, we don't need to do that.
Let's see where we're at.
Oh, wait, is this first reading?
I know, but let's, yeah, let's let's run on the first three and see where it goes.
I'm sorry, I thought it was. Just trying.
You want to prove the first reading?
Yeah, prove the first reading, sorry.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
I'm new at this.
All right, the motion by uh councillor Pete Sol to approve the first reading and a second by uh councillor Exner. To adopt the first reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Oppose nays or a thumbs down. Motion carries. Uh can we get a second reading? Uh nope, Nate, so that will move to the next meeting. All right, perfect. Uh is there a mo- we've closed the hearing, we've done the first reading, we're done.
Just so the applicant knows, I'll be off.
December, December fifth. All right, great, thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, Kelly, I have a question. Um the owner zoning, but Catherine was talking about zoning changes. You can't move zoning around without having enough zoning in different areas, correct? So that we aren't losing zoning, moving, so you have to actually swap zone, there's not enough particular zoning. When we get our.
If you're not meeting your uh. Don't rely on inventory first.
All right, thank you. Uh moving ahead in our agenda, we're gonna go to our report from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick updates. Um chief told me uh that police camera folks were here. Uh this week or or here this week um doing some of the software updates, kind of been a a little bit of delay. Probably pandemic-related um uh to get the the vendors out here to do the software updates, but. Um we're looking forward to kicking off the pilot program with a couple of officers on different shifts. Um we finally have our cameras on. Uh going with the body worn cameras, but also updates in our police vehicles. And speaking of that, we have three new vehicles that have arrived. Um and been outfitted that have a few more finishing touches to put on, but that was also something budgeted. Uh in this current biennium that took about a year and a half until we finally got delivery on on the new new uh cars, which is pretty exciting.
Do they look the same as the other ones?
No, these are actually the Dodge.
Difference?
Right.
Yeah, they're SUVs, they're different manufacturer.
But they're SUVs.
SUVs.
SUVs, yeah. We learned, we don't care about going fast, we have radios.
On the community campus park improvements uh that R F P that went out um about a month ago, we did receive four proposals. Um and it looks promising to interview at least two or three um of the uh proposals um for. Uh coming back to council then for that contract approval. Um and that will be a process that will be design, engineering, community involvement. Um eventually constructing those improvements at the campus. I sent around, I think Jeff also sent around uh information about the upcoming uh cat city council trainings that are put on. Um every election cycle, um it's the L O C's elected essentials, they do those workshops, those are in person, and I think the only ones that are nearby. Or not even nearby, so Hillsborough, Cassidy Locks and Kaiser. Um you know, we. Even for counselors that are seasoned or um have been, you know, here for for a few years, uh it'd be helpful to go through a refresher. The other option is the P S U elected officials boot camp and and those kind of complement each other. Uh the boot camp. I think has one session that's in person, but also a virtual option too. So let us know if you'd like to participate um and attend those. Again, we kind of encourage it as a nice refresher. Um and please let me know if you, if I I I'm interested in going in person. I'm not a, I'm not a virtual learner. Um so if anyone's going in person, please reach out and give me a heads up, maybe coordinate with. Uh speaking of virtual learning. Scheduled a a joint workshop with the Parks and Trails Advisory Board for December fourteenth, so I know usually uh December is a. Um a lighter month with the holiday, um but this month we'll have three meetings. Um that will be a v- a virtual workshop. Over Zoom.
Can I ask why?
It's cost recovery workshop, um the work that Michelle and her team has been doing with the consultant on looking at our programming, uh sending, you know, looking at policies on how to. Cost recover, uh you know, youth programs or adult programs, uh community benefit versus individual benefit.
The way on, way on Zoom instead of this.
I chose it.
Oh, why?
Well, one is the people, the vendors were out of town anyway, so they were presenting. And if we gotta keep showing up, you know, we have, we have technology to be able to do Zoom meetings. And why not just do it from our home in our sweatpants if we gotta do it for two and a half hours to get a presentation for people who are going to be here?
I guess I.
And we're not doing public comment that day, yeah.
What do you need from us?
Well, oh, I was there.
That's where that started and then it ended up virtual, yeah.
I love what they're doing.
But we all want cost recovery, like like that's what I said. I said, we're a policy organization. I think the policy should recover the costs, right? But but go ahead.
There is some policies that 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 can be helpful to get your input on. And it is to what I said, um programming, you know, could be. You you look at individual programs and do they have a community-wide benefit versus individual, and so do you look to capture more cost recovery for the individual programs, right? That, you know, maybe are not like the camps for youth, but there may be, you know, advanced ballet or something like that. Um so there's, you know, some policy questions. There's also just the education po- you know, component to this, uh getting you involved in what we're trying to do with our Parks and Recreation Department. Growing that, offering more recreation programming, kind of getting your reactions and input on that. Um it's helpful for us to kind of keep moving forward with building a a world-class Parks and Recreation.
I guess I just have a hard time with it being online.
I know.
It's hard to communicate, hard to communicate with us and the Parks Board when you're just like, hey, call here, call there, you know. It's one thing to have a presenter up there when we're doing that, it's just really.
They're also our facilitator.
That's fine too, like, maybe they should be here too. It's just.
From this.
Going from not even thinking we should have it. To having all of us have to gather in a room in December during the holidays for three hours.
I go back to my first point. We want all this. I I agree with you, this is policy. I'm not sure. I'm not sure what you couldn't accomplish through an online poll, send it out for red line draft, edit. Response person, you know, where I could do it at my home at midnight.
I'm interested in.
December fourteen.
It's actually a really good presentation. It's a really good presentation that she's gonna give if it's the similar to the what the Parks Board's already sat through.
We're we're all, we're gonna, if I mean, if people are really adamant about showing up here and doing it, show up here and do it. I'm gonna be doing it from Zoom.
Full stop.
Thank you, Lori.
I guess it was more just the getting together so that you and I can talk and see and in council walker, hope it's in. And that's the part that I think we get lost, that you were saying everything about here for the last two years, you know, and so that's my point. Is I guess I don't know enough about the presentation, but just to pivot and go and do this was where I was at a loss. Because I wasn't informed of all the information that maybe you've gotten.
Yeah.
But it is kind of one of those things that we get to be uh so disengaged sometimes that we don't. And I've been in many other ones that we've had people from Colorado presenting and doing that, but we get a chat and do that, so I don't know enough about it, so I'll just follow your lead.
Yeah.
But that's where I was kind of getting at is like, hey, pinning up here, because the Parks Board, where are we gonna communicate with them? It's all on Zoom. It's it's just a little bit of a challenge.
This is, this is me as chair of this council. Not try trying to take a body that meets from six o'clock until they had one item on the agenda, it's nine oh six.
Yeah, but it was a big item.
I I know, but 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 this isn't, but this isn't the only times that happen. This is, but this is just me trying to get together.
I gotta push back on that one. This is a big item and we 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 have, this is healthy discussion now. Look, I'm I'm cool with Zoom, but don't don't lump the two together because.
That's fine, and that's fine to push back, but that's my decision. Yeah, you don't have to lump it together. I'm I'm lumping it together in the way that I think about it. Uh that's fine. I mean, we we can meet in person. If you could want me in person, I'll, like I said, we all have our individual decisions. Lori's through Zoom, she can zoom it. It's it's not a big deal. But this is how we wanna engage it, but for a policy, just for a policy discussion on whether or not we want cost recovery. If we want to do in person, do it in person, it's fine.
I think your point too also is that the consultant will be virtual anyways, um you know, and. This, there will be some interactive components, but also some education component, kind of explaining and going through, but it's it's engaging. It's not like a boring lecture. Um and the mayor and I have been talking about for perhaps for work sessions, if we have to add additional meetings in a month instead of having, you know, the guys have to come here and. You know, dinner and all that stuff, maybe there's some, you know, a night or two a month that we could just do one hour work sessions on Zoom or something like that and. It people have, you know, it's actually more flexible for schedules and stuff to be able to do that. Um but I'll let the mayor, I don't work through that with you, we all.
What day of week is that? What was the day?
That's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
It's the normal Parks Board meeting there.
I I. December fourteenth, Wednesday.
Um, okay, well, I'm going off anyways. I think I have a.
Three more weeks.
No, I mean, I I think I have a a a work.
Oh, brother.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be in sweatpants and a Santa hat for that whole meeting now, Jeremy.
Okay. Same week, uh the employee holiday lunch, um should have received that invitation. We'd like to see you, see you there. Um just kind of low-key a chance to uh recognize employees um and, you know, have a nice little get-together at the community center. Uh at noon, um the Haldy Lights preview is coming up on the first. Be really nice to have you all there too. I I think it starts at six P M uh that evening. Um and then finally, uh start of a new year means things get, start getting busy. Um so the goal-setting retreat. And talking with the mayor, we're looking at dates again, um right after the start of the year in January. Uh I've polled staff, um so far the best weekends are actually more towards the end of the month. Um on the twenty eighth and fourth, but we're gonna send out a poll uh for city council too and and um of course, you're you take precedence on on what works for you all. Uh but it would be a format um similar to probably four years ago there, um not two years ago when it was all virtual. Um but uh 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 an all-day, maybe nine to four, and the fire annex or a site here in town. Uh catered, you know, breakfast, lunch. I don't think so. Pull up our sleeves and kind of get down to business. So, you know, I was gonna say, send me your dates, but I think it'll be easiest to send out surveys. So you don't have to pull up your calendars right now and find that date, but uh look for that coming out uh soon so we can get that calendar uh and ready for. Start the new year, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, done.
I guess the only thing I uh in terms of the uh the goal setting, I think that's good. You also um. With the committee potential changes that you're gonna be looking at, I was wondering about this R F P that's coming up with the community campus. Should we go ahead, process it, make a rec, you know, meet as a committee and review it, bring it back, or should we wait till committees get readjusted? Should we just full steam ahead on that?
Well, I I mean, yeah, well, I would say since that committee is the one that issued the R F P, they should receive.
Okay, cool. Um then for those who haven't been to that boot camp thing, I really found it useful. But I do better on virtual and so in spite of my, I I do like virtual, so for that. But I I thought it was great. There's a lot of great information, you know, highly recommended for anybody who hasn't been to it. And uh with that, really looking forward to those lights and everything else. And I think, Jordan, I think I had like two nights free in December, if you want, you know, just.
Other twenty fourth and twenty fifth.
All right, done.
Oh, other done.
Aldi's over here. Uh just wait, there'll be a majority there. Anyway, two really small things. On the edge of twenty six and Langin Sand, there is one of the largest maples, I think, in the city practically. Has decided that it likes to drop limbs and um I was walking there picking up garbage and I noticed somebody just about got hit. The little limbs came down and struck, didn't strike the uh car, but got pretty close. It's got those limbs that are way out over the street.
Is it, is it a street train? Is it in the right of way or is it?
It's like a hundred-year-old maple that is rotted and has pores of it. It's right next to the big billboard.
Yeah, it 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 likes to drop. Yeah, it, it likes to drop limbs. Especially when it rains and there's a lot of leaves still on the tree, which is kind of where it's at. And then really quickly, I see a lot of barricades going down, that's great, I love it, I can actually drive on Proctor and Pioneer now a little bit, but are we done? I mean, is ODOT done, that's.
If the barricades are gone, that section is is done, you've seen how they're going through, and the last thing they've done after the curb cuts and then paving. Putting in the curbs as they do that final paving. Filling the asphalt up to the curb, and once that's done, they're pulling, I was watching them pull them on Friday. But at your office there.
I just, as a, as a side note, I noticed that almost all of those. Little curbs that they put in there have got tire marks on them, and they aren't just up against the curb, they're across the top of the curb and bouncing. Trusting strategy.
And that's.
A B A compliant, though.
Oh, good.
I'm done.
Um, well, first of all, congratulations, everybody who won their election, glad for you. I was. Glad to hear that we are doing, considering some sort of a, you know, cash award or bonus or whatever you want to call it for. Our, our employees, you know, both police obviously, but also for the general employees, so. Um, I think that, you know, having something like that at Christmas time or that area is really helpful for them, and it also just goes to. Kind of recognizing how hard they're working. To really do, you know, a huge amount of work that we kind of really love to up with. And I will kind of call out, you know, I know Carol's worked really hard on getting these lights set together. So that sounds like a really. Good job that she's done to truly, you know, truly make that happen for for all of us, I appreciate that. I think the Kiwanis is gonna be helping out with that, I was at a Kiwanis meeting, so they'll be there to kind of help. Serve hot chocolate and do some things. The library, I haven't anything else to add from their group. Because they're, I think, still waiting to meet with the county representatives, is that right? Jordan, you haven't made that meeting yet, have you?
No, hasn't set up yet.
Yep, that's all I have.
Rich, yeah, quickly, um, hey, I just wanna, well, one. Email, I received an email, and I think a bunch of people are seated on it about. Citizen with guards across walk by Marsh Street. I just want to say thank you to the staff that responded to that, so it's really quick, you know, the plan, I thought that was super cool. I like to see that engagement, so thank you for that. And then the last thing is. You know, I noticed we changed our, and I, I understand it, our testimony process to, you know, set a time and all of that, which is totally fine. But I, I would like to maybe explore one thing, and that is. Expanding our, our personal amount of time that someone can talk, I think just from three to five minutes. Might be something. Still allow a little more talk, three minutes is pretty quick, in my time here, I, I haven't seen anything that's gonna take burden as hugely. But, you know, almost definitely that would be. Something, something to allow them to testify in that video as well.
I don't really have much, looking forward to the lights, and like I said, the, the presentation on the parks. Cost recovery is a really good presentation, I think you guys will like it. Super interactive, so that's it.
Awesome, thank you, Laura.
Jeremy. Yeah, I just like to apologize for earlier. It's a little bit jumping on there, you can tell I'm a little passionate about wanting to meet in person. That being said, I won't be there because I have to be at another, the E S D board meeting, because I'm on the, I'm on the cabinet for that, but. And so you guys can have a little rock and tide with that. Other than that, I know the street sweepers came through, I mean, the wind just blew all the leaves away. But they didn't get all the roads, because Lori, when I was running around town. Up here in Deer Point, they, there was like several roads that you just missed, it's kind of fun to run in leaves when they're dry, but not so much in the wet. Because, you know, but there is this, I mean, it's, you know, five, six inches deep through the whole thing, so. I don't know how they go around, if they just miss that area. In that area, but. Or if they're scheduled once a week. Once a week during each month for fall or whatever, but there is a quite a bit there, and there might be some others as well, but. Anyways, yeah, we've had some large windstorms here this last week and kind of. But we do have that wood chipper, there's some, there's some people getting some uses of that, because the, the trees. There, but I have nothing else.
Thank you.
Yeah, it tickle creek or tickle trough.
Oh, yeah.
Top, whatever that, that thing is, but yeah, your Thursday, so I encourage you all to either come. To that, walk it, run it, or just hang out at the beginning of it.
Some blast all the way around.
It is where I started six years ago, my running every day, and this year, right on the, on the twenty fourth. Or completed six years.
I didn't know that story, that's cool.
Hey, Mayor, Mayor can I add something real quick, since he's on that? For the first time, the Action Center will have. Credit card capability, so it'll be the first time that the trot will happen, that you don't have to just bring cash, you'll be able to donate. Using a credit card as well, so thanks, sorry about that.
Um, yeah, thanks for the comments on Carol and the work that she's done on the Christmas lights, they've just done a terrific job. Our Parks Rack and the community organizations. It was neat, actually Carol's daughter, Shara, and my daughter Lucy were out putting up posters around the Main Street businesses all day today. I see different community members tagging each other on Facebook and it's gonna be just incredible, I'm really excited for that. We have this, we just accomplished the first reading, we'll be going for, of course, with some more on this development we had tonight. There's been a lot of chatter and conversation on social media about it, just kind of a reminder to our team that. You know, beyond that, there are a lot of improvements that come to our community, a lot of infrastructural improvements that are looking to come on with this development, things like that, that. Really do need to be communicated, because people need to have an understanding as to what's actually happening in the current year in this community. I am wearing a bracelet, says forever changed by Lila. My wife Mackenzie and I were at the funeral of Lila Leather's Fitz over, over the weekend. Uh, it was very, a very well attended service, she's, was a very important regional business person out here. A lot of people don't realize that Leather Station Sandy was her first, was the first of those leather stations and and grew throughout. And she's not only was she the president of the Oregon and Northwest Fuel Marketers Association, she's actually a past first female president of Texaco. Board as well, and the past president of the Congressional Chamber of Commerce. Something for me is my first memory in this room. Uh, she was in here as I was a shadow counselor, kind of fighting for one of her stations and, and just really left an impression on me at a young age. And continued kind of that mentorship, so it's really appreciated the life of Lila. Um, a reminder, the one million, sorry, the one million earmark, we talked about that earlier, Jordan, we got a new congressional. Session coming up. And they get their one million earmarks for the US Senators per state. Something that this is a council body should be considering and thinking about what we want or ask to be, we were successful and gave you some money for our wastewater last time, let's not let that. Fall through the cracks, you've all gotten an email from Tyler on our city manager review that we want to be doing in our coming meeting in December. To fill out some survey questions on that, so if you haven't done it yet, so already, I haven't, let's try to get on there and get that done. And as Don mentioned, committee assignments, I did send out an email requesting. To kind of put in your request for your committee assignments as we move forward. One committee that was not on the list, that will be added, will be the Arts Committee. So. I know, I have an idea who might put in their name for a gaze on position to that. But let's go ahead and we're gonna start looking to put some resources and reports towards an art committee. And then, and, and then just to close out my report, I read an article on Pamplin, I had a great conversation with councillor-elect Nathan about this. ODOT has great grant programming, program that they're pushing forward for communities. That have a high, big highway running down the middle of their community. For to improve walkability, pedestrian traffic, cross streets. So something that we should be, I don't know. Chris, well, you know, we should be very prioritized up the list. That's right, so let's, let's keep that. Oh, even more, yeah, even more.
Even more than one less.
Yeah. With that, I'll go ahead and close out, thank you, everybody, appreciate it, but.